For the record, Chris Anderson, Handing Engineering. Here about half of Pine Hill Realty Trust for the construction of a new assisted living facility at lot 8A off Brooks Pond Road. This proposed project will include the construction of a 21-unit assisted living facility. This building is located near the terminal end of the driveway stretching that through Brooks Pond Road near an existing detention basin. In this area is a combination of several auxiliary outlets using garages along with areas of pavement for access to those areas for the original Brooks Pond plan itself. Besides that, the area is just generally storage areas as well as lawn grass areas. It's the intent to redevelop the area, pretty much create a straight shot extension of the driveway system to provide access to 23 parking spaces for the facility. Based on the use of the building, we need 20 required parking spots. We're providing 23, so it's a little bit in excess of the required parking. Access from part of a new concrete sidewalk that might access to the building along with the various landscaping provisions that's required by the ordinance. Relative to utilities, as I said before, there is an existing detention basin on the back portion of the site. That basin is currently designed to accommodate ceramic flow, but as part of this overall redevelopment, we're increasing the capacity within the basin so that we can provide additional storage capacity within the stormwater system to account for this project as well as the following hearing for lot 9A itself. Work will include the redirection of some of the drainage lines around the building in order to discharge into the new basin as well as the applicable sewer and water connections to the existing infrastructure within this parking lot area. That being said, we did receive department head comments and we have responded to them. Unfortunately, this was only this morning that this was sent out, but the board is more than willing, I can easily run through the comments of how we address the different concerns.
Sure. Go ahead, Chris.
So directly from the planning director, one of the outstanding comments relative to session 2245, point 144 indicating the species of post plantings. Right now showing deciduous trees, they'll be two and a half inches in caliper, four feet above the ground. Typically, these trees are that of maple or oaks or some form of that kind of tree. So we dictated that these would be deciduous trees of that kind of nature. Relative to dumpster screening in excess, this proposed project won't require any additional or any proposed dumpster pads themselves. Refusing the tendons is collected internally and brought to another dumpster facility located on the property to be disposed of appropriately. So it's because of the nature of the use being the assisted living facility, there's really no need to have a standing dumpster pad on the site. It's accommodated via staff. Additional comments relative to lease and fire review, which were further reviewed within the indications. Relative to lighting, there's no proposed additional pole mounted lights on the site due to the close proximity to the parking area. There's been several access and wall pack lines around the building for security purposes, but at this point in time, there's no intent of providing further pole mounted lighting. If in the future that is determined to be necessary, we will comply with all the required provisions within the ordinance for light spill and light expenses. Subsequent comments on filing to the commission, conservation commission. We are within jurisdictional areas, so that filing is forthcoming with the commission Additional comments relative to landscaping requirements for sessions 2258 and 2233. Again, we're showing additional or additional notations for deciduous trees themselves. We should also note that we are requesting a waiver from the requirement for a landscaped architect to prepare the plan due to its relatively minor nature and how it's kind of surrounded by existing development. We're showing the provisions for the additional landscaping trees around the parking, so we feel that should be sufficient.
The main concern is, I'm reading it from the building inspector, could you just talk to the...
Yes, so that was one of the first earlier comments relative to the densities and the land uses, but he filed a subsequent review on May 25th where we addressed all his comments.
And that includes parking and the subdivision plan?
And does it have a total unit count?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one units for this, but I mean, the whole project, what's on, do we have a
total count on that? Because wasn't there so many units we could do all together? We're just trying to get an idea when we are unitized and what the council like. But then the also the open area, the open acreage that was required for the add council leaves, that's all.
Peter Bobenzi in...
Sorry.
Brooks Pond. Okay, so first, let's sort of take you back a little bit. So on this particular site, on this location, we originally, the original approval had garages. And then those garages were not really desirable. And I came back to you and we converted them to units. I don't know if you remember this, but so those are, there's a, so the existing buildings that were there were converted to apartments. And so we then started working with the assisted living people and we decided that the garden-style apartments would use the certain same amount of land. So all this area is paved, there's buildings there, et cetera. And so what we're going to do, we're going to do is we're going to get rid of that and we're converting it to this other use. So it kind of, it's not like this is open area land, we're actually within, in both of these buildings are in the same thing. There are areas that were previously approved for other types of development within the development and we changed that. We came back to you and we submitted to you like what I refer to as like a porch up block.
Yep.
The reason we did that was that the zoning requires it to be a different lot. And when we subtracted that land from the Brooks Pond development, we also subtracted units from the Brooks Pond development. And so we're in compliance with the Brooks Pond development and all of that and the ability to put this on. We did a traffic analysis, you know, of the development. In fact, I think to summarize to the end, there's only four additional cars at peak times between the previously approved and the revised plan. One of the things I want to point out earlier is that, well, it doesn't have any part, it's not really part of this, but I'd like to sort of talk about a little bit about the front. In the front, for example, and you can see it in your brochure, I said in the brochure, if you open it up, you'll see a section about four Brooks Pond. Brooks Pond was a 32-unit approved building in the front, which we reduced to 17 units. So there, we actually subtracted 15 units from that particular building because in closer analysis, we found that what was happening was that the people that wanted these units didn't want small units, even though they're technically one bedrooms, they wanted large units. If you look at the architectural plans of these, you have basically a bedroom and then a den. And so they're larger square footage-wise, but they meet a demand that we have, you know, for this type of unit. The ranch units were successful, we ended up building a few of them, they were successful. But we feel that this is better, a better use and more demand for that. I would be happy to answer all your questions, but so, so we ended up eliminating nine ranches, 15 units in the front of building four. So one of the buildings is really just a configure, reconfiguration of units that we're basically eliminating. It's not, and then, you know, so what we're doing is we're trying to make it more compatible with the demand. We think this is a better, better way of doing it. In terms of, we're going to have to go to conservation. We're hoping to get through tonight and then subject to conservation approval, we can't do this unless they, so we understand that. There's no, you know, we have run into some delays, you know, with engineering and what we've been working on. And personally, I take some responsibility for it because I can change them. So I tweaked it and I didn't want to have units. One of the things that was brought up, I think rightly by Elizabeth, was that the heading on the architectural drawing said 25 units and then the actual plan is 21 units. We reduced it. But we have looked at different components. Again, we have assisted living, which is allowed in the commercial, and this is now in the President C district, which is allowed by special permit. But there are some different zoning considerations. One of the zoning considerations only being three stories. So we have to lower the building. Another consideration is that in the Resident C district, the parking has to be on the site owned by the actual building, even though this is a sort of a plan in which we own all anybody land and et cetera. There's actually a condition in C that doesn't apply to commercial, that the actual parking has to, it cannot be like the easement five feet away. That is the reason the eight became 8A and nine became 9A was simply to tweak the zoning line so that the required parking was on the actual site. It couldn't be a few feet off. Meanwhile, we have an abundance of parking that is in excess of what is required by zoning in the adjacent hamsters. We don't really need any more parking, we have plenty of it there. So those are the types of things. The point I want, a couple of points is that this is a redraw, a redesign of an area that was already approved for units. In some areas of the site, we reduce the number of units. We don't come back to you to reduce the units typically, you know? But a little commitment, four is going to be 17. If you look on your brochure, it's already under construction, it is 17, it's never going to be anymore. And so we're really, you know, we're kind of putting the units, we've eliminated nine of the ranch units. We haven't really talked about that a little bit, but so like we ended up coming up with a plan that we think better utilizes the land, provides the type of housing that is in demand. Like right now, we're pushing 140 on the waiters. If you drive by the development, you'll notice there are no development signs. The reason is, is that we can't, we have too many people. We can't even, and then every one of these families is a very important thing. So we think this is a good way to go. And there's some minor modifications in the detention areas, minor impact, if you look and read the reports, the detention ponds now are lower, the national heights are lower, et cetera. Every little thing that we've looked at, the engineers have done a great job of really fitting these things in. They're designed to meet the exact specifications of the zoning exactly without any issues. We continue to ask for Frank Bobenzi to do the landscaping design. This is something we've done since the beginning of the project, he's done a very good job. And, you know, we think it's a great addition, it's, we are pushing, we are against the gun a little bit here.
Well, let's get the, the counts have actually gone down then, the unit counts have gone down.
Well, we've gone down and up, but it's marginally up.
It's marginally up, so within, I'm just, we're just trying to get an idea.
Just list the number, Peter, what's the, how many?
I don't know, we don't know yet. Top of my head, because this is not perfect. But here's, let me explain it this way. There has been, there has been an ongoing debate. What's that?
How many?
Can you open the 638, 640?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we're going to open up for lot, for lot 9A, 638, 638 meeting and the 640 meeting.
So now we can talk whatever.
Um, I don't really...
Do you know what it is?
Chris, we have one of the, if I don't, Pete...
It would be like asking what the other development is. One of the things I would like to address with the total...
Can we, Mr. Bobenzi, can we kind of stay on track here? Because frankly, I've forgotten where, I think, I think Chris was in the middle of going through the department head comments and Paul asked a question and I'm kind of like...
Just interject, oh, excuse me, the count isn't here at the right...
Yes, I was just...
Yeah, I'm just looking.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the new, the new from today?
Yeah, that's from today, right? Oh, yes, exactly. Then I wouldn't even have a question. No, but we just got, we haven't reviewed it, it was sitting here when we got here, that's all. So, all right, let's move on, that's good.
I will, we'll go back to that comment in a moment. I'll just keep going down my...
Yes.
So we left off on comment 3A and our response to the board. Relative, this is again relative to the tree counts and sizing, as I said, we updated and those details dictate that. Comment 3B is relative to trying to save the existing vegetation. On lot 8A specifically, there's not a lot of standing vegetation that is just currently with the exception of some trees near the railroad line itself. By default, our general process is to save as much as humanly practical, which we have done as part of this, and we provide additional landscape trees around the building itself Comment 3C is just an acknowledgement of waiver requests relative to the landscape architect being provided. Comment 4 is relative to runoff, stormwater runoff on the site, which we can go back to further comment when we get to the DPW comment and all of the other impacts. Comment number five, providing 300, funding properties of 300 feet of the site location. Provided a general sketch to document the properties that are located 300 feet after the fact of this review letter. Comment number six is relative to easements and right of ways. It's confirming that there are all the easements and right of ways on the property that are shown in the plan. Comment number seven is relative to proposed signage. There's no additional standing, pre-standing signs on the property with the exception of the required handicap parking spots and individual signs that are needed. And comment number eight is we included the architectural renderings for this review. As Mr. Bobenzi stated, the plan was changing constantly, but the layout and appearance of the building remain intact, which is provided with the review. Relative to the special permit review, further comment was required relative to 13.4, which is, approval shall not cause a substantial inconvenience or hazard to the others' vehicles and pedestrians. When we submitted this plan originally, the traffic report was forthcoming and shortly after submission, it was completed. As part of the overall review, they looked at, we reviewed the original traffic counts for the original filing back in 2003-ish of late and compared that to what is anticipated at this point in time. And as a part of the overall development, there's a net reduction in vehicle trips from all the original approvals. So the original filing way back when the developed product was first proposed, there's a total of 2,800, a little more than 2,800 vehicle trips per day. With this revision, there'll be approximately a little bit more than 1,900 vehicle trips per day. So there's quite a bit of a drop still from the original design to what's currently proposed and active right now. So we anticipate that any inconveniences are well within the realm of manageable based on the original design and approvals. And comment number two is just an acknowledgement of the landscaping requirements and the waiver for the architectural review. Board, the assessor's office had no comment. Porta help posted question of the community room or kitchen. This building will not have one of those features. And comment number two is relative to the construction area being maintained letter free, which is a standard requirement nowadays of all construction sites. So that is a more than easily achievable task. Building inspector, no comment based on the review of May 25th, which gets into the involvement of the unit counts and whatnot. And based on...
It seems kind of interesting. It's good dressing, right? Yeah. Sorry. No, we're just looking at something else that's in there. Thank you.
Conservation requested the plant removed any trees. It's noted we can easily accommodate that as part of the design. DPW brought up a question regarding the drainage analysis itself. So as I stated earlier, there's an existing basin on the site that was built part of the plan, that was approved after the project was first designed. That basin is quite small and as part of the proposed revision, or revisions, we're increasing that capacity by almost 33,000 cubic feet. So the basin is significantly being larger, which will mitigate stormwater impacts. And then our second level review was to analyze how much impervious area is actually being developed as part of this project. Total impervious area proposed by lot 8A and 9A is approximately 16,100 square feet. When you take a potentially a blump brush approach to this, if you were to take 100 year stolen bit of seven inches of rainfall in 24 hours, that creates an additional 9,400 cubic feet of runoff going to this basin. As we're increasing it by 33,000, there is sufficient capacity within this basin to keep operating at or below its original design values. So we can review that with DPW to get them on board with that certification. And they also had further comment relative to the sewer and water connections, which have been provided on surprise provision. Fire department stated the site is accessible per the master law for fire access and protection. They had no concern, comment two, relative to stormwater, cause snow removal. And comment number three is relative to the building being sprinkler honored by fire alarms, which are required by code, so that is being addressed by, with the fire department. And that is all the comments from the various department heads. That being said, if there's any other questions from the board, I'll be happy to answer them.
Are you knocking down any existing structures?
Yes, there's an existing garage facility located right in this location. It was a second auxiliary structure, that's again, I believe, used as a garage facility and a missing shed that's located off in the corner here.
So none of the ranch-style houses were built in that section?
No, no, I remember those. So it's effectively three structures that'll either be removed or relocated outside.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
Anyone else? Did you want to cover 9A?
And we received all this information today and sent it out to all the department heads today. We just had a...
Yes, we'll have the responses on any new stuff. Before he starts, can I address, can I address?
Sure, just break short.
We apologize for the delay in getting it back, but I'd like to point out that the DPW, what he's asking for is just, it needs to be a statement signed and stamped by an engineer review for the drainage analysis. So we will have that, although it's his comment, it's not that we have a stamped engineer plan that says that we have met his criteria. He wasn't, you know, and so we're going to go to DPW and we're going to go to the conservation and get an order of conditions. The conditional on the fact that we meet their requirements, it wasn't like a review thing where we had to come and show them something, they just wanted it to be stamped. We go to the conservation, they're going to have to approve it anyways, I just like...
Thank you. All right, I'll just open this one up. This is lot 9A, so for again, for the director, Chris Anderson, Handing Engineering. This is for again, a 21-unit proposed assisted living facility. Proposed project will be located within an area that's currently 91 space along the main drive for the Brooks Pond development itself. As you can see here, this is the main run of the Brooks Pond Road as it comes into the development. As you further go off the page over here, is Central Street along with all the other newer structures being constructed at this point in time. For this facility, the parking will be provided immediately alongside of Brooks Pond Road. Five zoning orders were required to have 20 parking spaces, we're providing 20 spaces themselves. Building will be located within this area with some clearing of land around the vicinity of this building. As part of the overall development, again, there's an existing detention basin on the backside of the building. As part of this, we're altering some of that basin, but providing additional capacity within the system itself to ensure that this basin operates and continues as it's currently doing now. Additional provisions are for landscape trees around the facility as well as all the applicable water sewer connections. Relative to drainage, all the runoff from this portion of the site gets redirected into the main trunk line within the Brooks Pond development, which then discharges to the basin on lot 8A. So there's no additional impervious area going to the detention basin immediately behind the structure itself. So again, we did receive department head comments, we did provide review of these comments and if the board is willing, I can go through these comments again. Pretty much a reiteration of lot 8A's comments, but there's...
Are any of them different? Maybe you should just highlight the ones that are different, we'll put on the record that there's the same comments.
Of course. From the planning director, landscaping requirements, landscaping requirements, decent fire review. Same comments relative to pole mounted lighting and wall pack lighting around the structure itself. We do acknowledge that we are going to try the conservation commission for the additional work. We've updated off of plan details for trees and labor for this one as well for the landscaping We've provided a similar abutting property locust map, confirmed all the right of ways and easements and signage, and we did provide architectural renderings. It's pretty much the same exact structures rotated in degrees. And relative to special permit review, it's the same comment relative to traffic. We're seeing that decrease in the overall traffic. Comment number two for special permit is again relative to the landscaping requirements that we just went over a moment ago. Assessor had no comment, community room relative to Porta help, construction sites. Building inspector had no comments. Conservation requirement... DPW, again, drainage analysis that just went over a moment ago. And fire department reviewed the access, so over and the sprinkler requirements for the structure itself. So it's pretty much the same exact comments.
Does anyone have any, board members?
One quick, Peter, that was the location for other buildings that were previously approved that are now being eliminated, so replacement of that. It's a replacement of that.
I'll open it up to the audience. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Anything else? Do we, Elizabeth, do we have everything we need?
What's the board?
Sorry, we haven't gone through.
Well, we have to still have that other stuff. You can have comments.
We haven't had the new material reviewed yet.
Fine, okay.
That's the only thing that's outstanding.
What's that?
We have to continue.
Yeah. Can we continue to the next July seventeen? It's our next meeting.
Well, the reason I brought up the DPW is like, was it clear that like when looking at, and I can explain the reason if you want. Is a vote approval condition. I don't really, I'm flexible on the conditions. Like, for example, we have to get conservation without understanding. DPW would so far as to say they accepted it provided it was stamped planned by the engineer. The other comments are about whether the trees, et cetera, et cetera. No. This is critical because of what's happened in the interest rate environment. If I do not get this relatively quickly, I'm not going to get to be able to do this.
So my, okay, so my question is, what we have, what are we waiting for? We have the department head comments on both of them on nine A and eight A.
They have the adjustments and really one that was an issue was always the conservation.
It must have been DPW.
Well, the DPW's. Oh, the DPW as well, the stamp.
And we have to go over the unit counts too and make sure that's.
Well, we have the unit counts.
We have it, but we haven't.
Today.
Yeah, but we have it.
This multiple times on the unit counts. You can make it conditional on the unit counts being within zoning, but they are, there's a stamped engineered plan. They took detailed time to make sure of that. That doesn't really have an impact on this project because this one is, doesn't have a unit count requirement. That's the first. The second thing is that we've been going back and forth for years on this idea of on the unit, the unit counts that they had by zoning. And they apply to the, to the first part of the law. There is no unit count requirement on this system. That's part of our zoning. And so what we've done is we subtracted some land and we subtracted units. And the remainder is left in compliance. That's what the plant, that's what the building inspector reviews. That's what the engineering reviews. It's on the plan so that you can make it conditional on the unit counts being compliant with zoning. But it is, it's a real critical, it's not, I had no idea this interest rate thing was going to happen. You know, that they were going to start marking them up, let this feel like. And right now, it's going to happen again in the next meeting. Here the fact, these developments are extremely sensitive to this. It's not that I can control. So if I can, if whatever conditions that you wanted, you wanted to put in there, it would be acceptable. As long as they have the zoning or whatever. They've already reviewed it. We answered their review, but review answers did not get back in time with different reasons. I don't know what they did to, but they did the best they could. And that's bottom line. It's just that it could be conditional on that. But I assure you, I think if they can't go forward with the conservation without the other conditions, they can't go forward. If these two buildings get built, how close are you to completing the project? I mean, I can see obviously that the fund is. That question was raised. I want to address that a lot. In fact, in the minutes, word was used that I'm done. And that we had the, what's that review we had? The mayor asked, like, when is it coming down? But here's the deal. So what happens is down the road, things could change in zoning. The community could change. Things could happen, change things. I don't, based on my understanding now, I don't see it going forward any further reasonably in the future. But I don't know ten years from now. But I don't see any, within the existing zoning today, any existing, that's the end of it. But if some change, if the city owners to change the zoning, they did something different, it could change. A lot of things happened that I didn't think, like, I didn't realize the demand, how people would want such large assisted living mess. How they would want to have a couple of each have their own room. They would have different, different things that were requested, certain things that we thought they would want, they didn't want. But nobody has been building housing for seniors for a long time. That's, I don't have a stake in the private sector. There's huge deficit. And this development has been, it's just filling a need and so forth. It is the highest taxpayer, taxpaying property in the city. And it serves a phenomenally needy population that want to live in a certain state. And we have to be able to provide these things. Recently, you know, the economic things changed so dramatically, so quickly. Capital costs are the most expensive component of this development. And those are rising fast. And if I don't move it quickly, I won't have be able to do it. And I'm hundred and forty, we have literally hundreds of people. These are the people who want.
What's the board want to do?
Well, you know, I know we have reviewed this other stuff. If we, we have a fairly accurate count here, I think it's twenty or so over the original proposed, but it's been shifting as well. You know, as long as conservation has to approve the open butlers piece, right? And the cultural piece still has to meet the requirements of the, of the state. If we're from the state, right?
I never touched any.
So we'll know what those numbers are. And conservation could stop the whole thing. For a stamp on a plan, and if they've been talking to DPW, which seems they have, it seems they've been talking to the building inspector because he originally, you know, like your calculations. You applied the wrong. Right. Thing. And when we explained who it was, yeah, it's not, it's not an issue now. But he, but he, but he said that, said so. And if it's subject to all the conditions and as well as the condition that you noted, I mean, said like, like Mr. Vencey stated, I think that's pretty fair myself. I have, there is a need for housing, right? I just. You've all been down there, you've seen one of those. It's, it fills a real need.
But if we do this for this applicant though, you have to, you're setting a precedent because other applicants did meet their deadlines and they got continued.
Well, we can, we can make it subject to all the conditions being met. We can make it, the review being part of those conditions. And then we haven't lost any deadline. We can just make it subject to the, you know, everything being in the coordinates with.
Everyone else is going to come in here and ask me for the same thing.
This applicant has a long track record.
I don't know that that's the case.
What's that?
This applicant has a long track record.
Time out. I want to, I don't know that that's the case.
Well, I think Paul's, I think Paul's speaking in near Africa right now, so that's why.
Yeah, I'm just saying you have a track record, so we can trust you. It's different than any other.
But I don't even think that the, the.
We submitted it, there was, there was comments, so they've seen the plan. We are now answering the comments in the affirmative of every single question that was asked. Some were significant. And so what we're, we're doing is we're saying, we're complying with the comments. Complying with them. It's not that this was done and they didn't review it. Every single department has reviewed it. It's unlimited comments that we have answered in the affirmative, every single one of them. Now, to the extent that, you know, I don't think that it's cap block, you know, or I think that it's, like, we have answered it. And we have, conservation commission is a contingency, DPW, I think is a condition. The other things are basically, we are complying. If you don't comply with the plan, we're cannot or will not zoning. So you don't even, just if you comply with zoning. Doesn't mean it's. If that's part of one of this, you know, subject. If it applies to zoning requirements, that kind of, kind of puts a lock on it right here, doesn't it? Are you just saying it's just because of today and came into today?
But Paul brings up a good point, but Paul brings up a good point.
Right.
So, so the outstanding issues are the, the. DPW.
No, I just say one thing.
Yes.
Two more, I already, I'm sorry. And so I don't think I'm going to say a lot different than Peter just said, but with respect to the zoning, I'm a, I think this, this application stands on meeting zoning requirements in and of itself. Obviously, the board wants to have a handle. Hey, how many units we have there and that's been presented. But I can tell you just informationally, I'm sitting next to Billy Hannigan, we're in his office and because we have had a little to nine A and eight A to create them because the parking and it's doing a specific calculation to the adjoining units, two hundred fifteen units. And it's still within that. So I can, I can represent that there's, you know, personally, that there's no issue with the zoning whatsoever. This board is a very experienced board. And, you know, you don't really talk about this, but Billy Hannigan makes sure to tell me. He apologized, but I think everybody knows. You know, tragedy is life and the, you know, the information didn't get to the board until noonish. And obviously, that's not the preferred course of action for a submittable project like this, but, you know, that was the situation. So hopefully that the board would think that the, nonetheless, that the department comments have been reviewed by us and responded to appropriately. And then you have the last two issues with respect to the representation DPW, obviously. The engineer would stamp that saying, yeah, you know, with proper recitation. And the other condition would be that we certainly have to meet all the conditions to the conservation commission. And so I think that's what we're hoping for.
And I would also note that because this project is located within jurisdictional areas of the conservation commission, the stormwater ordinance that the City of Longestir's instituted lately is applied to this project because it is within jurisdictional areas. And that also doesn't devolve from the fact that state law, regardless of project or form of fashion, is subject to stormwater management. So we will have to be doing the same review that is provided within our response with the conservation commission to show them that we are in compliance with the regulation. So the little side, additional side piece that again, like what was reiterated, conservation still has their shot at the board here on this one as well. And stormwater does fall under their review as part of the project.
Okay. So I just, I just before, in the event there's a motion to close the hearing, I just want to make sure everything's been discussed in that we know the outstanding issues are the, is the, is about the the drainage now, drainage analysis and the, via the DPW approval from the conservation.
A unit count, you know, total unit zone.
Elizabeth.
By zoning, well, it's going to be subject.
We'll have Elizabeth, well, we'll have Elizabeth review it. I mean, if we have. If we're having DPW ensuring that.
There's no increase to the impervious.
There's no increase to the impervious surface and then we, we're, and it's subject on the conservation commission's approval of the project. We're also going to include the planning department's satisfaction of the, of the unit count. Are there anything, are there any other?
And I would just do the catch-all with any other department.
Any other, okay.
When you do the catch-all, I'm just curious, it's a little different. Do you want me to wait until I get all the comments back from departments and then add them into the decision?
So I guess that's where I'm confused. When you say add, I, I thought we had all.
I thought we.
Well, we sent, we sent, we sent out the new materials to the departments to confirm what comments are outstanding.
Was that correct?
But, but this, I mean, this says that the building inspector, right? I don't know.
Well, we have the, well, we have the representation from the, from the developer that they're going to comply with all the comments.
But when I write my notice of decision, I like to list each comment that's outstanding, like.
Well, I don't know, like, we have an answer to every comment.
Right.
Every comment.
So the only ones that would be outstanding would be the ones that, that they say haven't been met, right?
I missed they come back with additional.
If they raise an additional question based on what they've already raised, if they raise an additional question, that would be subject to one of the conditions.
Well, so when I write my notice of decision, I have to kind of not finish it until I get those comments back. And then I can add those comments in.
Yep.
Yep.
This is a little different. I've never done this before.
Including the conservation? I think conservation, just say pending conservation.
Any approval of conservation.
It would just be DPW and then, yeah, they should all be back by Friday.
DPW, the engineering plan being stamped.
They should be back by Friday. And there's an appeal period, period anyway, so you'd be able to.
And Friday is sufficient time for you to do what you're up to.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping for.
I'm, I'm out Friday.
A vote based on the two comments that we satisfied the DPW drainage calculation and stamped engineered plan. And the conservation order, subject to this conservation order conditions. Subject, after that, everything is relative to zoning, like.
Right.
Like, those things are not, you know, you couldn't approve two family homes in a single family zone anyways. Like, the idea is, is that the zoning requirements, the number of units that are remaining on the site and all that stuff, those are the only issues. So the only two things are, and I use the language of the DPW, that they're just looking for a stamped engineered plan from the, so I'm sure Hannigan will come back and meet with the city and they'll work out whatever they had to do with their. Like, I did read the zoning calculations, the actual, I don't know the deals, but the idea is that the storm runoff would be lower, the, the actual height in the tension basins, et cetera. So everything, you know, we worked out between them. Meanwhile, we still have to, what key point I know is we got to go back, we're going to go before conservation, which all those analysis will have to be presented all over again to DPW, review them all over again independently anyway. He didn't say he could review. He just said he needed a stamped plan.
Right.
And then, so I understand those two conditions. The other conditions, you know, are things that can be reviewed by the board.
So do we have a motion?
Does anyone have chat? So I'll move to closing.
Well, we'll find out.
Oh, wait, yeah, yeah.
So I'll move to closing.
Close the six thirty.
The six thirty.
Yeah, we have to do them one at a time.
Yep, second.
So I have the motion made the second to close the six thirty public informational meeting for the site plan itself for parcel eight A. Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move to close the six thirty.
One, second.
So I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing for the special permit on the use of Brooks Pond Road parcel eight A.
Motion made by.
Motion by Paul, second by Pat. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I move to close the six thirty eight hearing for a special segment.
And that's a public information meeting for the site plan application for nine A. Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And again, we move to close the six forty hearing for a special permit for use.
Right. Motion made second and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So open the six forty-five public information meeting for thirty-seven Cars Street, map forty-seven parcels one and two for Lemonster Emergency Management Park.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jonathan Collet. I'm with David Ward. The applicant is Lemonster Emergency Management, represented by Arthur Elkhall. Hi, everyone. My name is Jonathan Klett. I'm with Haley Ward. Uh, the applicant is Leominster Emergency Management, uh, represented by Arthur Elkhall.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Uh, so this is a existing building at 37 Carter Street. Uh, many of you, uh, may know it was the former site of the Trisom Petrochip Factory. So also on site was a house and shed which have since been removed. This is all basis of conditions, by the way. So house and shed have since been removed on site. Historically, the edge of pavement ran up this line and wrapped around, uh, to the other side of the building. Currently, uh, the pavement, um, still exists in this area, but as you move towards the rear, um, it moves to gravel and broken pavement. Uh, in the area, uh, that the house and shed, and shed, uh, once stood, is now mostly dirt, uh, with some grass areas, uh, closer to the fence. Parking-wise, there are currently, um, five dedicated spaces, um, for parking off Carter Street in front of the building here. Uh, four normal-sized, uh, spaces and one handicap. Um, and so something that Arthur has expressed to us is the need for more parking. Um, when they have events, uh, everyone tends to park on the street, which really clogs up, uh, Carter Street.
If, if I could just offer some context on that.
Name, you said your name already, right?
Yes, uh, name is Arthur Robetall, and I here as the Director of the City Department of Leominster Emergency Management. And, uh, just again, uh, to expand on that in context, we have, uh, classes and training ongoing, uh, with us, with emergency medical training, uh, and with various other departments that meet there five days a week, um, sometimes also on weekends, during the day, and then in the evening. So this time of evening, for example, we typically have some sort of medical or first aid training going on there, um, up until about 9:30 at night. Uh, with our existing parking lot situation and when, um, as we stated, that there was an old house and a garage that we've torn down, but it's really just sort of, um, a beat-up area. It's dirt, it's broken pavement and so forth, and people can't park there. So they end up parking on the street, and they fill that entire block. In fact, we've received phone calls from the neighbors, understandably, because we're sort of crowding on them, and if they're having, um, visitors or friends over or just plain old out in their yard and so forth, our, our vehicles are all up and down the street. What the parking lot proposal will do is pave this area that the city already owns, and we can walk you through the engineering for it, but pave this area, landscape this area, and take this parking off of the street, put it into a parking lot on land that the city already owns in the proper venue. In other words, um, we've addressed lighting, landscaping, um, water, stormwater, et cetera. Uh, so that's just the overall context of where we're going with this.
And I have the proposed site plan. So, uh, we're proposing a parking lot. Um, everything in brown is proposed statement. Uh, we're proposing 16 spaces, uh, which will go along with the existing five to make 21 total spaces. Everything light green, uh, will be the grassed area, and then the dark green is, uh, landscape areas. Uh, we have three proposed maple trees, and then, uh, the rest of the dark green, uh, hatched areas will be a mix of native plants and bushes.
That'd be a nice change, really.
It, it will be, yeah. It's kind of a dust bowl right now, right? A dust bowl and beat up, and, um, so, and it'll get, as we stated, it'll get all the parking off the, off the street. Um, and, um, have it back where, where, where it should be. So, uh, no, no curb cut there? Is this, this existing, there's an entryway right there?
Yeah, so this is existing. Off of Carter Street.
What took you so long?
I, I was saying.
You tore the house down.
Right, right. We're trying to wait for some trees to plant themselves and ask for some just to work.
Usually it's weeds and, um, this concrete.
There's no, no entryway or anything? I just wondered why there's no parking out there.
Are there, I believe you would say there'd be trucks, um, small trucks turning around accessing that door?
Yes, we have, um, so Leominster Fire Department, they have a regional, um, hazard response vehicle there on one vehicle bay, and we have another 10 vehicles coming out of another vehicle bay. That upper part of the parking lot, where you see, uh, beyond that first island, that's the area which will be for turning around and for backing up our vehicles. We back our vehicles into, uh, the vehicle bay, as does the fire department there. So that whole area there will be for turning around and backing up, and the area closer to the front to Carter Street is, uh, where the parking spots will be.
And how about your snow?
Snow storage, uh, we have this area dedicated to that.
They met the requirements.
It's not on the plan, right?
And, and there's no alteration to the existing building?
No, no, there's not, so.
Yeah, as, as Paul said, all the department heads, uh, Conservation is just requesting native plants, and, uh, fire, fire approves, health approves, just for the record. Assessors approve, building approves, public works approve, Leominster PD approves what?
Emergency management.
Yeah, I know. Um, any other questions from the board? I'll open up to the audience. Anyone have any questions, comments? Yes, councilor.
Uh, Claire Prius, Leominster Castle, uh, L. Hige, 117 W Drive, Leominster. Um, just to speak of support, um, that facility has become, uh, Northwest County, um, it's just revered by all the neighboring communities, and they do a lot of it, a lot of functions there, a lot of training, um, in cooperation with the police and fire and other emergency management. So, um, that will be a relief to the neighborhood to at least be able to get those cars off the road. Um, I think there's still be cars on the road, but it won't be to the, uh, to the extent, uh, that can alleviate some of the pressures there, so, I speak in support of that.
All right, thank you, counselor. Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Right, motion made in second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the regular meeting. Call to order.
Patrick Ferlo, Paul Weiser.
Here.
Good job.
John Souza, excuse, Sal Chacone.
Here.
Tom Kerrigan.
Here.
Jason Parra.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
Carrot Toriasso.
Here. 2.0 visit minutes of previous meeting, May 15th.
I need to approve the minutes of May 15th.
I said it.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor to approve the May 15th minutes?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 3.0, plan submitted A and R for 143, 151, 78 Jossland, map 576, parcel 6, map 577, parcels 10 and 11.
Good evening. My name is Steve Dowell from Haley Ward. The address made with the, I've been here. The API has, the API has forced the applicant to conform to the original agreement, so that's what these, they were, they wanted to change some of the configuration of the lots. So that's what this.
So, Steve, where are the changes here?
So before.
Yep.
We had to come out, we went around this.
Oh, right, 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 yep.
And then came back here.
Yep. So then you just go a straight line across.
And they shifted, this was shifted, so they went to the angle point of the street, and came on and around.
They need to.
They're still trying to negotiate, but the original areas that were excluded in the API agreement are these three, per a sketch. That was about.
So what are improvements?
This is improved.
About one in lot lots. That's coming out of larger parcels on both sides of the road, which because of the size, I put in a request for a waiver for the listing of the owners.
Right, I remember that. Okay.
Motion to endorse.
Second.
Jason, any questions?
We're, we're moving lines around and maintain, uh, the lot size and.
They, they both exceed the.
Yeah.
The requirement. Their configuration is more because they have API restriction on.
Right.
So the original agreement, these are configurations of the lots. They were trying to alter them a little from the agreement and the API was not agreeing with what happened.
I have a motion to endorse in a second. Any other discussion?
Doesn't want to roll.
Talk to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Old business non, new business. Start with 5.1, site plan application for Brooks Pond Road, um, for parcel 8A.
Remember the waiver request.
I'm gonna start with the waivers.
I move, we leave the requirement for a landscape architect.
Is that the only one?
It's the only one of those, right? But this is all mentioned.
Eight, eight.
Eight, eight, okay. Motion made to approve the waiver for the landscape architect. Is that the only one?
That's it.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion for the plan itself?
I move, we approve the plan conditioned on approval by Conservation Commission and satisfactory meeting of conditions of the new business.
What about the unit count?
And the unit.
And the planning director verified the intercell.
And, uh, any.
And any other.
Subjects, any other conditions that may arise from the department heads.
Right.
For the, for the.
Well, we're doing, we're covering the review right now.
That may arise based on the new.
Based on your analysis or on the DPW.
Expect nothing.
You have to do this to get it out, can you see?
And that should pass Conservation. That should give you a clear path, right, at least.
And then planning director to review the conditions, partner Cecilia though.
Yes.
Always correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to approve the site plan application for 8A with the conditions as noted, and Stephanie, you have all those?
I have mine, and the waiver.
And the waiver, okay. Motion second made, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 5.2 for the special permit for the use on parcel 8A.
Same motion.
Same motion, same conditions. So, we do the waiver.
No, that's the use, a waiver.
Waiver first, yeah. So motion to approve the waiver for the special permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion on the permit itself.
Same motion with the same conditions.
Motion made, motion made second?
Second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
So I move to approve a waiver for the landscape architect for 9A for 5.4.
Okay, for the site plan application. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Well, we didn't get a second.
Second.
Oh, okay, sorry, second, thanks, son. Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And now the, the same motion with the same conditions for 9A.
Uh, for the site plan application, although, uh, motion made second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And now 5.4 for the special permit, again, the waiver for the landscape architect?
Same second.
Motion made to approve the waiver, and with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And then finally, for 5.4, special permit, the same, uh, conditions, same motion.
Second.
Motion made second for the special permit for the use of 9A, all those in, with the same conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to 5, 5.5, site plan application for 37 Carter Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
But you still owe it, right?
I do, I do, I will, with Derek to see, I don't, I don't have to ask him. I'm in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, 5.5.
5.5, site plan application for 37 Carter Street for parcels 1 and 2.
Motion to approve.
There's a waiver. There's a waiver.
A waiver.
Oh, the waiver for the, uh, landscape.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the motion to, uh, approve.
To waiver?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the waiver, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve, uh, the, the planning plan, so, an application.
With the.
With the planning director to review the conditions, partner Cecilia though.
And, and with all department heads, it was just the landscape, uh.
The landscape, well, land.
Yes.
Conservation.
Conservation, yeah. Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 6.0 communications, want to choose a regional planning commission or to appoint representative for the next fiscal term.
Now. I'm gonna do in a couple.
Talking about that.
We don't bring a term limit here, so you should go again.
I'll go again, that's.
All right.
Look at that. Thank you.
Invited.
That's great.
Okay, motion to.
You must have nothing to do.
Motion to reappoint Dean Valier as the representative. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 6.2, want to choose a joint transportation committee representative board appointed. Our planning director is representative for this past, this, uh, from July 20, for the coming, yeah, for the coming.
Yeah, this year. It's just, this is the second reading of it, right?
Of course, yep.
Motion to approve.
Motion made second, all those in favor?
For a point, I don't know what to call it.
This has to be in the next agenda too.
Okay.
Three times in a row.
Remember second thought.
All right, stretch of report.
Um, we're off the vote today. I don't have any.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Uh, yeah, we do. Uh.
You have, you have to, yes, you got it?
I do. I'm gonna make a motion that the planning board enter executive session, session in the general laws, chapter 38, section 21A3.
After he's done.
To discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation regarding New England Land Company LLC and the work performed at Sawyer Way. As an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, as the chair declares. So that's my motion, if you're gonna.
Okay, and we're not going to reconvene.
Oh, excuse me, and we will not be reconvening the meeting. The regular planning board meeting after the executive session.
Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Patrick Ferlo.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
John Souza, excuse, Sal Chacone.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Carrot Toriasso.
Yes.